Requires a motion. We have a motion in the second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is adopted. Dr. Peterson, is it you or Todd, or who's next?
I, we're tag teaming if that's okay.
Alright, very good, over to you guys.
We've asked Mark and Pete to do a little bit of a presentation related to Community Spirit Park and Maintenance Agreement and the subsets that you see listed there which include the park development, the amenities, and maintenance agreement. So they're gonna walk through a presentation that they put together and then we'll have discussion, I think, after that point. Certainly the discussion will, I think, involve what kind of improvements, what costs we're looking at, who's doing what, kind of the big things that you all want to know before we get any further along in the process, so.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good setup and also just to, before they start flipping through the slides, this is, I don't think any of us see this as being the ultra final, I mean, there's a lot of input and questions and discussion to have. However, it's, it's the result of many, many months of talking throughout the fall and the winter and as we get closer to launching this park into the next, the next phase, it's an important step in that process, so. You guys have a thought?
Ready to roll. Why don't you go ahead a couple there, Todd?
Just go, keep going. Okay.
Sure. You know, Community Spirit Park is kinda where we're at right now. It's all about the opportunities that we're trying to provide for both our citizens and for our students. We want to really have a community setting for both customers of the city and customers of the school. We want ample access to the school campus and it's really a nice campus setting. We want to have people coming and going as recreational opportunities provide for them, but also have a park setting so that we can promote the well-being of citizens in the community. And then this is also a really good example of a venue of cooperation within our community. And so with those goals in mind, we kind of set out and worked through a few issues.
Back in October, I think it was October 21st, there's a large group of us that got together from the city and from the school district, several of us here, Jane was there, Steve Elger, the Activities Director, Tim Regner, Business Director from the school, got together and said, okay, what is it all we need to discuss and focus on to make this work? So these are the items that we came up and we separated out by individual who would be responsible in establishing the standards and the ways that we're gonna work together to, to make CSP work well for both the city and the school. Then we can go to that next slide. So the topics that Pete and I spent a lot of time together with, with our staffs, were obviously service of Community Spirit Park and then how are we going to pay for those services? The level of service turned out was pretty easy to establish. Steve Elger, myself, Jane, Dave Peters, our maintenance person, Tim and Rick from the school, all got together and we all pretty much agreed we wanted a state-of-the-art park. So just wait until you see the bill. But you know, certain areas, thank you, certain areas are gonna be high use. You know, the fields that are used for football and soccer are gonna need more maintenance than the general park areas, so there's gonna be different levels of mowing and trimming that's gonna need to take place. So over a couple of meetings, we were able to put together what our service expectations were and the sheet that's going around right now probably makes no sense to you other than you can see the three different levels of service that we established. Looking at that bottom graph is really what's important. There's Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3, and then those were the areas that require our constant attention.
As Mark had kinda mentioned, in the level of service area, when we operate facilities, whether it be a school building or a city building, we have usually about a 26-week window where we're open to maintenance, activities, outdoor things that go on that we have to be prepared for. Doesn't mean that we're not working before that or after that, those are accommodated in a variety of different fashions, but also we have to maintain the facility in that same fashion.
We're down to about 20 weeks now.
Yeah. And so this is exactly what you're seeing up there as far as the level of service. And as Mark had touched on, we went through each individual facility out there, baseball, softball, grade 8 space, grade 8 is my definition of kind of that open, large, green area. There's room for eight large fields, beautiful area, and then there's parkland and green space. And so each of those require a little bit different maintenance and you can see by the color coding how we plan to get to that area and then what that maintenance schedule will be. So it's a little easier on the paper here than it is there, but it translates the same way out.
Just a quick one, top dressing, for those that, I don't know what top dressing is.
Top dressing, that's just those spots that kinda turn brown and don't grow back, putting new soil on them, reseeding them, keeping it maintained with the rest of the space.
And then the three acres, two acres, one acre, what does that mean?
On which area, area?
Top dressing. What does that mean?
That'd be the number of area, the amount of area that we see that would need that turnover every year on a given basis. So in Level 1 service, there'd be roughly three acres of area that we would top dress and then reseed. It could be more, it could be less.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And what that correlates to, John, it would be the, how much you calculate you're gonna need for materials, staffing, seeding, dirt, whether it's screened, irrigation, different types of maintenance that would go on there.
And then working through that, you know, then we had to start putting numbers to it. So what's it gonna look like if we want Level 1 service? How many hours does that mean? How much water does that mean? The amount of fertilizer we're gonna use? So we started establishing what kind of costs each of these levels is, are gonna incur. And on a yearly basis, we'll come back and look at what does each space need. It might take off really well and we don't need to top seed as much as we maybe initially thought. So it'll be a yearly review of it, but then we also established who's gonna do what? What can the city do, you know, with, with extra equipment, extra manpower? What can the school district provide? And what's that balance gonna be? You scratch my back, I'm gonna scratch your back.
So the maintenance agreement's really broken down into four main areas. Like I'd mentioned earlier, the total maintenance cost is based on the entire park for, that is what I would call north of the school from the trail and east of the school from the trail, which encompasses park, natural prairie land, a variety of fields as you see here. As Mark had mentioned, it's kind of a plus minus maintenance, so what we wanna do is take it every year and where we see needs, increase that area, and where we see we don't have to do quite as much, take some of that down. So it's, it's like a hockey score sheet where you're good at on one side, if you're scoring, we're gonna keep building on that side. If we're subtracting or getting scored against, we're gonna take that off of that area. So we've got a rolling spreadsheet developed for that so that Mark and I can go through and say, we had to mow four times this year towards the end of the year, we only need three times, so that goes down. And we subtract and add from that. Again, these are the things that we don't have, as you can tell from today weather. You know, we figured we'd be ready to roll here within a week, you know, and have about two weeks worth of maintenance already done on the facility. So that's put us in a little bit of changing needs category, so to speak. And then regular scheduled items and billing to track what's going on and then our goal would be to meet and talk about that.
Let me, beyond that, another piece of that, that we put together on October 21st was, okay, what else needs to be done at the park? We've got it built, but what didn't we include? So we, between the city and the school district, got together and identified what the priorities were for each and from that, put together a list of enhancements that, that would really be beneficial both to the community, to the students using it, and teachers using it, and then for the associations that'll be out there throughout the summertime.
And so from this point, you can kinda see what enhancements were selected and I think Mark, I was passing stuff out here, but I think Mark kinda went through how we, how we got to that point. We had a variety of different people rate those, so it wasn't just one individual, it was a balance of everybody putting their two cents in. These are in no certain order, but really it comes down to we can make substantial improvements out there by adding and getting this ready to roll this year with a commitment of about 160,000.
Then, as you can see, the park is opening on Monday, 'cause it's all gonna melt by Monday. It'll be firm and ready to be used, no. But that was, initially the plan was open it up on April 2nd, obviously that wasn't anything we were gonna be able to do, but the goal is by, by Monday to open the park up and start having it available for use. Scheduling will always take into account what condition the fields are in, whether it's the baseball and softball fields or those open fields in the spring, there's spring soccer that they can't wait to get out there and start using those, but until that field firms up, we have to schedule that and make sure that they're in good, they're in good condition and the frost is out. We continue to work with Kraus Anderson on punch list items. There is some work that still needs to be completed out in that area. It has been completed, but it needs to be warranted and taken care of. We're talking about top dressing, we have some areas that just didn't grow the way they should, and that's still under warranty. So we'll continue to follow those punch list items throughout the summer. Once they do, do that reseeding or something like that, there are trees you might see tipped in those areas, they have to be replanted. They, that warranty starts over on those, so that will continue on for a while.
The area is being scheduled, the rep department and the school district are working with the associations. The school district has been involved with several of the meetings with the associations trying to make this coordination effort happen. And school activities, we hope, are out there, like Mark said, on the 16th. We'd need probably a miracle for that to happen, but nonetheless, as soon as the weather breaks, we wanna get full use as soon as we can. And then as we mentioned, probably the key to this is having joint meetings, being face-to-face with each other and talking through the issues on a continual basis. And that happens on a variety of levels. Todd and Paul, Jane and Mark, and Steve and I are working through things. Then maintenance staff also meets and talks about a variety of different activities.
If you could, it could, the enhancements, it looks like it's pretty interesting split on some of these things and I was wondering if, I don't know if there's a way to do it quickly, but if you could just kinda go through and I feel like I'm just gonna guess on the portable bleachers you guys are putting down on the cement and the bleachers?
Right. We have, we have quite a level of detail and Todd always tells me to bring out 30 spreadsheets and more of these guys, but we usually prepare quite a cost estimate to go through that, John, and then we work out with the school to say, what would you like to do on this part? So like, give you an example, where you see the scoreboards and the drinking fountains, how they offset. Steve has kinda been headlining that issue and he has a pretty good idea of what he wants. To us, we just need numbers up there and a variety of different things, and so he feels strongly about how that should be led, so he's kinda leading that purchase and that installation and some of those things. On the drinking fountains, we have the ability to dig in water lines. And so we're kinda flipping that back and forth and getting guys that are good at what they're doing and know what they want. We don't really care how the scoreboards look, you know, we want them to be a blue, St. Peter blue, you know, or whatever the color would be that Mark picks, but otherwise, what it is, a balance out there on, if somebody has spoke up during the meetings to say, I'll, I'll lead that charge, that's kinda where it went to. So there's too much for one guy to handle, too much for two guys to handle, but for four, four people, we got everybody going in a different direction trying to pull some of that together to get a lot of these installed.
And what's great, we have a facilities meeting after this, correct? So maybe you could kinda, 'cause the whole thing with this new school and everything is we, we wanna hear what we're getting first so we don't go, wait, why, why do we do that? You know, and so, well, I can bring that up again.
Yep, sure, certainly.
So, the other thing on the enhancements, what's the deal? What are we planning for, for bathrooms and how are we covering that cost?
Well, initially, porta-johns is our solution to restrooms up there. I think long range, there's probably gonna be some facility that's built, probably more towards the north softball field, because there is water there, there's sewer there, that would be the natural place to put them, but it's not something that's in our current, it's not gonna fit into our budget right now, so it's, it's out there, but it's not something we're looking at.
But we've got, I mean, I don't mind porta-potties, I just think that we just need to have enough of them and not have to have an eighth grade softball player run half a mile to go to the bathroom and then come back and miss her at that.
Right. Now, I think there's four regular bathrooms and two ADA compliant restrooms that are scheduled for out there, and Mark can probably go through, I don't know if you have your map with you.
Yeah, they're labeled, each parking lot has a set of restrooms, so there's one in each corner basically of the park right now.
Okay.
And when, when you say restrooms, you mean the temporary porta-potties at this point, or each of the parking lots?
Correct. Yes.
This is gonna be a little bit of an experiment for the first year or two, we've not ever used this before, so figuring out where the best locations and listening to people will be, have to be part of the standard course of operation too.
Yeah?
Now, when you, when you talked about itemized billing, who is gonna be responsible for reconciling this itemized billing that you talked about?
It could be either or. What we'll do is sit down and go through the expenses and different, initially, we're probably going to purchase a lot of the information or a lot of the equipment that goes in. Mark will have that background information and then we'll do a plus and minus. And so that could flip back and forth, the school could purchase if, if they so choose, so like, maybe the scoreboard is purchased by the, the school and that would come on their total, and the installation of other stuff could be put on ours, but it's really a plus minus, so we calculate that all out and say, okay, we know where we wanna be, we've gotta pay them $5,000.
You two are gonna be the gatekeepers on that?
Well, actually, Brit and...
Tim Regner will get involved from the school side.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think another way that we envision that, Stephen, is, you know, again, this weather doesn't help tell the story, but as, as the spring and then the summer starts rolling, there, there are gonna be weeks and months where we get a ton of rain, and so there might not be as much, or there might be a whole lot of mowing that's happening. Well, those bills then are gonna reflect increased mowing and labor and field and all that. There may be some months where, or some weeks, some days where maybe we mowed six times some July, but the next July, it's only four times. So that's the itemization that we're talking about, just so we can really get a sense of real costs and then compare those over time for budgeting purposes and reviewing an agreement from time to time as well.
Good. Thank you.
Just a curiosity on the, how do you decide when to cut the grass? Or, as an example, flawless snow? I mean, if we're, we've got a target number here of two and a half inches, do we cut the grass when it's two and three-quarter inches, or do we cut the grass when it's three and a quarter? How do we, how do we determine when we're gonna cut the grass? 'Cause, I mean, I, I know a high-use source, but I mean, if you're cutting it six to eight times a month, it sounds like a golf course, not an athletic field. How do we determine when we're gonna cut the grass?
Well, I think, that's a good question, and I understand your concern, being my neighbor. I, I cut it more at work than I do at home. Generally speaking, and I don't, Pete, say, say how you want, as a school district, we're watching the forecasts, so we know what we don't want it to get beyond. It's a little, it's gonna be different because these fields we're actually using in the summertime, where the fields that we had before, we wanted them to grow long. But you gotta keep looking ahead within the next seven to eight days as to what you're gonna get, otherwise it can get too long and then you have to gradually work your way back down. So if anything, you're gonna mow it a little bit early instead of a little bit late, or you end up with a mess. Some people run out of shoe over, or grass over their shoes, but I don't know if that's the same process, but...
That's a good analogy, Mark, that you had. The other thing to remember here is, is when we sat down and made a decision to put competitive grass seed in there, you know, that was a very expensive proposition from both of our points of view because we knew what the complex was supposed to look like when we got to that point. These are designed to be competitive fields on certain levels, and so we hope it's an improvement. To answer your question about how do we mow, usually when we get in that three, three-and-a-quarter range, we know that we can go so fast and cut that half inch off and be efficient. As Mark had mentioned, if we get it to three and a half or three and three-quarters inches and then we try to cut it back to two and a half inches, sometimes you gotta do it twice. There's not a lot of efficiencies in letting it go, except for sometimes you establish a root base for the grass, and so sometimes you're gonna see that. If we work with the rec department to look at those schedules and see that we've got a competitive soccer tournament coming in and we need eight fields for the weekend, we may be cutting on Thursday. And if it's been fertilized and we got a half inch of rain overnight, it's possible that we could be cutting it on Friday on some of those situations. So it's really how the staff looks at it and says, here's what we gotta do, or if we're only playing on two fields, maybe we groom two fields and we come back on Monday and do the other four.
Part of that too, Mark, is, I'm sure you know, but you never want to take off more than half the blade. So you've got, you've gotta time it up based on what's best for the grass, and sometimes it's mowing it before it needs to be mowed.
We don't know how this grass yet is going to react to a lot of the things we do, so it may be, maybe it's a blessing in disguise and maybe it'll be a lot of work.
Well, I'm comforted to hear that you have a methodology and, you know, somebody knows how to read a ruler, right? I mean, the worst-case scenario is you do the drive-by, I think it needs to be cut. We all have a different opinion of that, but if you've got some way of, you know, you walk out there and you stick a ruler down and you go, hey, okay, till you get trained, that's comforting.
This is more advanced than anything the school district or the city's ever really done in thinking about how to maintain these. I mean, does the school district have a policy for the South Lawn when you mow? No. Do we have a policy for the Boulevard in front of City Hall when we mow? Nope. Now you've got numbers here that you're gonna try and adhere to. So this is, there's been a lot of thinking put into this and consultation, not only with the staff that's here, but with others and with some of the primary user groups on what works best for their activity that's going on.
And we have been using a consultant on both getting past warranty issues out there with Kraus Anderson, and Mark and his staff have been open to that, and Tim Mayo and his staff have been working with those guys. And, you know, if we don't have that expertise, we gotta find it 'cause you've got a substantial investment in what's going on there.
You have laid out on the, on the, on the map, all the athletic facilities, built the entire place. This park will serve more than athletics, it'll also serve as a city park. There will be picnic areas and walking trails and that sort of stuff.
Right.
I'm not sure I see all of that on here yet. Certainly it's not on your spending plans yet. We've spent $2 million so far and $3 million, whatever it is so far, and the next spending is all gonna be more athletic. Is there, is there a plan for where that stuff goes, something to see where the picnic shelters go and all those sorts of things?
Yep. Do you wanna touch on that, Todd?
Yeah. Well, why don't you give it a whack first and then I'll jump in?
We do have a long-range plan for the facilities where Mark had mentioned, up in that north area, both northeast and northwest, where we have restroom facilities and shelters and a variety of different things, maintenance garage. We didn't have enough money, but seeing that nobody passed out when we showed you 160, we probably had the wrong number up there. We probably should've went a little higher with an idea that said, here's what we could do. Well, believe me, we could've got higher pretty quick, but, but the idea would be is that we'll sit down and see what people are using the facility for, you know, is the picnic area something that takes off? Or maybe next year's enhancements would be picnic area, establish different criteria. Maybe it's more restroom or water facilities by the tennis courts. I mean, Mark's already got a handful of things, I've got a handful of things, we just have to see how it develops as we go through there.
The bathrooms are gonna be expensive?
Um, it depends. I mean, you know what they cost, they're 100,000 plus.
And we'll end up with three or four of them, probably?
At least two scheduled, and that's if we don't add a third somewhere around the tennis complex, so it's a matter of how you can get it installed or phased in and, and what you have for resources to get there.
And so you do see on the map, and I know it's, it's in gray on the color map that I have, it says bathrooms, that would be in that corner near Cumming Road 20 and the Fort Road, and then of course, up in the northeast corner amongst the three softball fields. I would mention as well that when you look at this list of enhancements, let me go backwards here, when you look at those enhancements, I think the team's done a very good job of kind of assessing what works for not only the school district's audience, which you could argue is just kids, but bike racks benefit everyone, whether you're there to play frisbee or whether you're there to go to a baseball game. Bleachers primarily benefit the competitive activities. Drinking fountains demonstrate everyone, and they're not in the middle of the soccer field, these'll be along the trails, so if you're riding your bike out there and pushing a stroller, there'll be water fountains along those trails. Garbage and recycling containers benefit all the fields, benefit all of the users, whether you're just, again, playing frisbee out there, or whether you got an activity where you gotta hit the drinking fountain in between innings. Portable restrooms benefit everyone, this is a big area. Some of you maybe haven't been out there and seen how long it takes to walk from one end to the other. Sometimes in the day, I gotta stop at the bathroom at both ends of that walk, probably. And so, you know, there's, that benefits everyone. Scoreboards are primarily gonna certainly benefit the competitive athletic fields. And signage, whether it's directional or it's the field signs, help everyone, again, whether it's that kinda latent green space user, or whether it's somebody trying to get to the ballgame on time. And then storage sheds, those are primarily for, certainly the city's and the school district's use, but also for the association's use. They need to store some stuff out there on occasion, and they don't have to be big, they don't have to be humongous, but they gotta have a place to store a sack of soccer balls, or all the baseball bats, or the bags, or whatever, there, you gotta have space for those kinda things.
Talking just a little bit about the funding from the school district's perspective on, on the enhancements, you know, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this, but you know, as everyone knows, the district with its bond referendum, nearly $60 million, and that project is near completion, but there, there are remaining funds that the, the school board, facilities committee, et cetera, has been hanging on to, just to make sure there are no more surprises when it comes to final billing. So we started talking this fall about the fact that we were looking at, you know, upwards to 700,000, $800,000 in our contingency funds that would be used for things like this. And so the school district has already moved forward on, I believe, four or five different projects that will happen this summer. You know, if you take this number and split it down the middle, you're talking about $80,000. Facilities committee and the board can, can have a chance to take a look to see if that fits within the, the budget of those contingency funds. I'll tell you that it does. So just when, when we see a number like that, that, oh my gosh, like, where's that money coming from? These are, certainly when we got into a partnership with the city and city, we're gonna build a park, it wasn't just gonna be about racks, it was gonna be a park that would be used competitively for soccer and softball and baseball and, and physical education as well. So this is just that next step in that process.
Peter, Mark, one thing I don't see listed is equipment. Are we using existing equipment? Do we think we have enough? Is that one of the reasons we're putting the sheds up, so we can move some equipment there rather than move it every time we need it?
I mean, if you're talking like goals and, and things like that, there, there were goals that were purchased as a part of, of the building. They're actually there, they just, we haven't put them out yet. But yeah, they're, they're gonna need a place to go in the wintertime. I don't, softball and baseball both have purchased some equipment and then used the equipment that they used previously. We have two batting cages at the, at the middle school right now, one of those eventually will end up at the new high school.
I was actually thinking more mowers, graders, that type of thing.
The plan we need to add on somewhere, more likely down by where the little kid soccer complex is, we have water and sewer down there, and we've talked about building that enough so that both groups can use that shed coming in and out for maintenance, depending on what they need. They've got a variety of different equipment they store in different spots. The actual storage sheds that we're talking about here, Mark's had three reconditioned, we're looking at getting a couple more out there. Those will be used by associations in the school district during the competitive season that they're into, and then more than likely, those are gonna come out, be stored wherever, or if we need to on the bigger sheds, the school stuff will go over that.
So just so I can be clear, Pete, the, the sheds that are listed on this enhancement summary is like a 10 by 10 shed, and we pick it up when the season's done and put it behind a fence someplace with it blocked and this...
Right. We have a couple of 10 by 12s, I think Mark's got three of those, and then we're looking at a couple just a little larger, so if there's different things, we can move those sheds with our lull, our piece of equipment out there, and we really don't know where we're gonna need them or what we're gonna do, but...
And it might change from season to season with some of those.
Right. And as we build complexes by the tennis, we've talked about adding on, on the north end of the tennis complex down the road and also down by the... end of the tennis complex down the road, and also down by the softball fields, you know, we'll take into consideration what we need to build for storage in those individual compartments so we can get rid of these little sheds.
Yeah.
And I think down the road, whether it's phase two or three, or maybe even as a component of this, we've talked a lot about our building trades course at St. Peter High School, and that's the course I built to have a cat-free humanity home every year. Getting involved in, how do they impact Community Spirit Park with smaller sheds, bigger sheds down the road? There's, I think there's a lot of interest in connecting our kids to this park in the construction.
Yep. Those discussions have started, and right now, as Pete mentioned, on the west side, we're looking at a couple of larger sheds, but they won't be done for this summer. And in the meantime, we need something for the soccer association to keep, keep balls in, to keep flags in, same thing with baseball, they need a place to be able to, to put their bats or their bags or their rakes, we don't want them all laying all over the place. And as Pete mentioned, we, we had three sheds that last summer, we remodeled and cleaned up, put all new siding on, they're not sheds that you may have seen laying around town, they actually look good. And the city's looking to get like the three that, that match that, and we'll put them by each baseball field and softball field so it's convenient. But right now, we're gonna put them on a gravel pad because we don't anticipate them being permanent.
We good?
If I can, I, I think one of the goals here that Paul and I have had is, if somebody has dramatic concerns, to yell no now, so that we know how to try and forward or address that. But it certainly is the goal of the superintendent and myself, to bring back a more formalized agreement to the individual groups. And so, our hope is, is that philosophically, maybe at a 30,000 foot level, you're all saying, well, this kinda makes some sense, you're going in the right direction. Paul and Todd, keep going, get us to the point where we can see an agreement and let's try and get something to happen.
The only thi, I, with that, Todd, the only thing I would say is that, you know, don't be pushed by unreasonable timelines. Do it right, do it once, and let's not do something that we have to undo next year because we didn't know it was gonna be X, right? And when it comes to the development of those scoreboards and everything, Dr. Peterson's right, we, we have the funds to be able to match our development plans. Whether it happens this year, it happens next year, or it happens some this year and some next year, it, we'll still have the money next year. It's dedicated for it, so we don't need to spend it now or it'll be gone, so to speak. So that would be the encouragement I'd offer you is to...
I appreciate that. I think one of the challenges for any agreement in, in this type of scenario is making sure that it has enough defined flexibility, because this is all new to all of us. And I think you're right, a year or two at a time, at least as we start, makes a lot of sense for all of us.
Well, the next fun one we have tonight is, on the agenda is Lincoln Drive and a concept plan.
Pete, Mark, thank you. You guys are gonna talk about, well, we're gonna talk about, Paul, this is you.
Yes.
All right.
Yes. Mark's gonna pass on the concept map that we've been working with some engineer, architect planners, over the last six months or so on. And so I'll just kinda get this, get this started and talk you a little bit about where this came from. So Lincoln Drive, the road that goes right in front of St. Peter Middle School, has had quite a history, and I've been honest to a whole lot of people, it is a city street. I think a lot of people who drive down Lincoln Drive, they're like, oh, that's just like the, it's like the, the middle school's driveway. Like, no, that is a street. And so when we first started talking this year about, you know, I think we need to maybe do something about Lincoln Drive, a lot of people thought, well, I bet it's because all of the buses are loading and unloading. Seven thirty in the morning at two or at three o'clock in the morning, that's really not the issue. The issue with Lincoln Drive has become that St. Peter Bell Senior High School has now become a St. Peter Middle School for grades five through eight, and the five through eight cafeteria lunchroom is right outside of Lincoln Drive. And so as fifth through eighth graders get done with their lunch in the fall and in spring, but especially we noticed it this fall, they need to burn off some steam, and they go flying out of those doors of the cafeteria, and they are within feet of a city street. And if you've had a chance to drive on the one-way, anytime this past September, October, November, you will have noticed that we've got ourselves a safety issue. And so we started talking early as administrative staff with our school board, and then ultimately with the city staff, about ways to address the Lincoln Drive safety concerns. And those conversations have been very, very positive. Our school board has helped people develop consensus around the table that this is a top priority to address with any sort of contingency funds that we would have related to our bond. And so we're interested in moving forward as early as this summer with an improvement plan that will really take a couple different phases. First phase, and Mark, as he, and I'm gonna turn this over to him, will just address the, the safety issues that we can do within a relatively short timeline. But then the second phase will really make this more of a comprehensive solution that will benefit our kids and hopefully will, will have minimal impact to traffic patterns around that area. So with that, Mark?
Sure. Todd, thanks for bringing this up. I apologize, I did not, we're making enough copies here. But what you'll see on, on this map, the initial phase, what we're looking to do is close Lincoln Drive at this point on the north end, and then on the south end, right at the pool. And what it would be is really just a curb bump over. A curb can drive over, but then we don't want anyone to drive over. And as, as you can imagine right now, driving up to the high school, or the middle school, still say that, driving onto Lincoln Drive and heading down and dropping off somebody by the flag at, at the lobby. Well, what this would do, you'd have to drive over this bump over, but also right in front of you would be a number of, of bollards, so you would, you'd be pretty sure that something's not right. You should not keep going straight. So we would create, from the south end coming on Gray Street, a turnaround in here where people could turn in here, drop their student off, come back out and exit back onto Gray Street, making the south end of Broadway a two-way street. The bollards would be across right here where emergency vehicles could get in and out from either end, but it would be clear enough and there would be signage here that you would know you shouldn't be going any further on here and then pull into the parking lot here. Won't affect anything with parking for the pool, it would just make this a two, two-way entrance on, on the Gray Street side. Going up on the Broadway side, we'd have the same thing, you'd have bollards across right here, but yet you could drive through, so our emergency vehicles could get through because this is a fire lane, we don't wanna close that off. We're also talking that we probably wanna continue using it for bus drop-off until we get to the, the second phase of this project. So same here, if you drove up, you'd realize you can't go any further. This one, we might wanna redirect people to come in here initially and drop off any students and pull back out. But again, the north, north end of Lincoln Drive would become a two-way road, on and off of Broadway, and essentially then we would have no traffic from this point down to the pool, other than our bus pickup and drop-off. Did I nail it?
Excuse me, excuse me.
So the hope then is that, in talking with Pete, that this is something probably in this initial phase won't result in having to turn the road over, or take the road over from the city. But eventually, in phase two, Lincoln Drive would clearly be closed, and that would probably be a different topic at that point. Correct?
Let me ask, what, what would you be thinking for that second phase? Or what, what is your, your vision?
Show me.
Just, if you don't have all the details, that's all right, I'm just curious.
So in the second phase, you can blow it up a little bit.
Which, you want the north end?
Yeah, the north end. South end really won't change it off from what I just described, otherwise, other than become more permanent. On, on this end here, we would, just slide it north a little bit. There you go. So in this second phase, we would continue with the two-way, but right here, we would cut into this and create a loop right through here. So this would become a natural drop-off and then exit back onto Broadway. What that allows is for events, we still have middle school events in the gym that take place there, so there can be pickup and drop-off fairly close and on the sidewalk, so Grandma and Grandpa can get in there easily, drop-off to get in and out of school, and a large turning radius so people can get out and around fairly easily. So that would be phase two, along with that, be some playground equipment that would go into it. In this first phase, because we, we believe it's temporary, only a year or two, we really don't wanna mess with curbs, we don't wanna spend any more money than, than necessary this year. But that second phase would be much more substantial.
On that second phase, ain't you bringing a lot of traffic back into the area where the kids are, though?
Uh, we will. Can you go a little bit further north again?
Sure.
But in doing that, with this loop right here, this will be closed. So no, now these kids have this space and vehicles don't go in the here at all anymore. Right now...
So if I'm coming up there with a fire truck, I gotta go into the other side? I can't get in on both sides?
If, if you were coming with the fire, we would still make sure that lane is open for it. But we would change our deliveries then, where they would only come in from Gray Street. And more and more with this being the middle school, delivery are moving up to the high school.
It would be more of a plaza look, Ed, with curb that would be drivable, so if you have an emergency, you could come probably from either direction, go right over there. But a normal car would look at that and say, I'm not supposed to be here.
Okay. Yeah, most of those curbs would need to be drivable anyway, just to snow over there.
Paul, I'm sorry.
Where we have the plaza right here, this would extend, this would all be a concrete area, and then with a walkway going down. These tennis courts have been redone now, it's, it's a playground. So we've added basketball courts down here, we'll leave the, the tennis courts painted so FIAID can use those and still be a learning station, but this is where the kids spread out to and run around. So it gives them free passage to get to the hillside and down to the court.
So this is, Paul, you had mentioned about after lunch, where did, where are they exiting the building at?
That mean?
Right now, when they come out for lunch, they generally, this is the cafeteria right here. So they come out here currently and make a beeline to here.
Okay. Can we not, if you're trying to save some money and that, can we not, during certain hours, put a barricade across or a fence, open gate type of situation, so there's a crosswalk with no cars during that time? Wouldn't that save a lot of money and a lot of this type of thing, and you can still maintain all your other things that you have now?
It's a possibility. I mean, just, just close it off right here?
Yeah, just during certain hours. You know, it's just an hour or two, or whatever it is during the day, you know, I would think you could adjust for that instead of reinventing the wheel.
I think part of what they're looking at, Chuck, there too, is, is that they want the traffic to get into a pattern of going in certain directions, so the bollards would encourage that, but a barricade could be the filler.
Yeah. Well, I guarantee you, you know, Grandma and Grandpa in the wintertime are not gonna be real happy with having to, I don't care where you're at, either end, on getting out and being able to go to this events.
Right. I, I don't think they're gonna be happy, I think that, the, and I, I think this is a chance or an opportunity where we should spend money. The more defined we make that, the more everyone's expectation will be that they can't come in there. If it's a sign that says, please don't drive in here, and it's on a set of stop horses, people are driving in there. So I, I think if we can make a turnaround, if we can make a plaza area, they've got those at Gustavus, I don't drive up on the sidewalks at Gustavus, I could, but I don't, and I don't have that expectation because of the way it's landscaped, because of the way that it's done. I, I think that's kinda what we're going for. And it will cost money, but I'd rather spend that money than have a kid get hit by a car, which...
That's, that's true, in any case, but, you know, there's a balance, we all lose unless you guys have that kinda money to spend.
Well, and the other thing too is, it gives us a chance to redesign that plaza area, you know, within the confines of trying to create still a fire lane. There, we've got fifth graders that used to be able to play on playground equipment. I get that eighth graders won't want to, but fifth graders do, and we need to find a space for that. That's why it's phase two and it's early and we don't know where we put it, but that's one of the essentials that we're looking at as a board, is to try to bring some of the things that used, they used to have at North for fifth and sixth graders to the middle school.
So this is a surprise that this happened? It sounds like the planning wasn't there for anticipating this?
We didn't know what to do with Lincoln Drive. No, we...
Yeah, I, I'd say that's exactly right, Chuck, because when we, when we converted that to a middle school, nowhere along the way to those conversations, did anybody go, oh my God, we're gonna have an issue down here with safety and kids? It was only once we got kids in there and started looking at the flow, the traffic plan and all that sort of stuff, it became very apparent that they think they're immortal and that they win the contest stepping out on the curb every time, that they win, that everybody's gonna stop. And that's, that's not the case. And, and we've gone through a number of what-ifs, going from the barrier pole to sliding gates to the, the bollards, to phase one, phase two, phase three, and I gotta tell you that it's still shifting. And, you know, phase one, probably got that pretty, pretty focused, but phase, what phase two is actually gonna be and onward, I don't know if we know that yet. But, but those kids are, I mean, it's really different, what you think they're gonna do and what they actually do is, is really, we never saw it coming, that that was, we thought they'd go up the hill. They have absolutely no interest in going up the hill.
Even with four staff members out here directing kids, I've watched them, and they don't see them at all, they just shoot. I, I had to put louder exhaust in my Prius so I didn't hit anybody. They just go, and, and to your point also, that's why phase one is this and this. Phase two is an idea, but nothing's been improved at this point. But the idea that this space was gonna be enough for fifth and sixth graders isn't working. And where they're naturally flowing to is where we have space. So somewhere down the line, something in your, will change, if it's the way that we described it. But that's, that's what ISG has come up with as a plan at this point.
From my chair, there are probably two or three primary issues that we'd like to see accomplished. First of all, is that whatever's done at the Broadway intersection, at the Gray Street section, we have a consistent traffic pattern that's established. So to clarify that more, we don't want a different traffic pattern from noon to one than what we see from three to five. We don't want this to be a two-way sometimes of the day and a one-way sometimes of the day. It's gotta be consistent at both of those intersections, so people kinda agree on what's going on. That's one. The second one is certainly fire and being able to provide the emergency support that's necessary and get close enough to those doors and the important parts of the building that we see those things like that. And the third is, frankly, there's a water main in there, we gotta maintain that. There's gotta be a way to do that, so we don't want anyway to build too much on the top of that, that couldn't be torn out and then built back in, not build a building on top of it or, or anything like that. So making sure that we can meet those goals as a part of the overall plan is, I think, really where we need to be.
Do we know, how much, this might be a peak question, how much traffic does Lincoln Drive get that's not school-related?
Yeah, Mark probably would have a better idea.
Very little.
So most, most all the, I mean, thinking about the city services side of things, if we were to eliminate through traffic on Lincoln Drive for other residents in the community who are driving around this neighborhood, that's not a huge inconvenience for these neighborhoods, is my sense, and that's what you're saying as well. This is primarily used by people accessing the school from one direction or the other, or dropping off at one end and coming through.
It's not really a through street, people don't use it for that very often because they see all the foot traffic and the vehicle traffic for people parking in there, and they avoid it.
Do we need to maintain a roadway, the way, the whole way through, I guess is my question? Would it be possible, can the city turn this over to the school district at some point to...
There are four or five people in the room that know that's been a point of discussion for more than a decade now.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so...
So I'm, I'm treading on the...
It's very possible. Ultimately, yeah, it provides more flexibility to the school to make things move.
I mean, I would... I mean, I would, personally, I think that the best solution would be to have loops coming from the top and the bottom that allow for drop-off for accessibility purposes. And, I mean, if you could even tear out part of that roadway to make direct access for kids coming out of the school, walking across, whether that's-
Grass.
-a patio, grass, something along those lines, enough flat space to put a playground in, I have no idea what might be possible, but I don't see the need for the city to maintain control over this road at all.
It makes it easy too, with the school owning both sides of the road.
Right.
There's no complexity to dealing with other people and who gets what and-
Right. I mean, as long as there's fire and emergency access, but I think we can do that without having a through street, and we can have other, some other patio, or cut-through, or something that would allow that, and I would just as soon do that, but I don't know the history and background of who's been asking for what over the years.
I think from my chair, it's really, the school has to look at what their goals are, and understand what our three goals are, and continue to think about what an appropriate plan might be for their utilization. And at some point, it flips from being a city street to something that we vacate, and the school district will, will then be in charge of it, and that's okay.
Next item we have up is Township 361, and a project.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, and members, this is really to provide an update of what we've been working on in relation to 361. So as you'll notice here, the map isn't exactly updated with where the building is or anything like that. My hand here is located approximately where the school building is, and so this is 361. So we'd applied for LRIP funding this year, did not get LRIP funding. As you know, we have some resources that are set aside to develop this roadway, and so we're gonna continue to apply for that funding. We certainly, we shared some of the cost, I think it was seventy-third split, for the turn lane that was here. We have some work that will need to be done at the intersection at 351, and we've been already in discussions with the county engineer, Seth, related to that. We're trying to figure out how to muster the resources, so that this can be developed in a similar way to what we saw with what is now Jefferson, but was Gardner Road. So the goal here was to give you an update and say, well, we haven't given up yet, we've just gotta keep working at it. And any calls you can make, any help you could provide, any donations you might have for that roadway, we'll consider all those things and try and make it move forward.
Are naming rights available?
I would think they might be, I think it's possible.
Wait, wait, I have a name board.
We don't-
Do you wanna call it 362?
No, the, as, you know, part of the goal with LRIP funds has been to work cooperatively, certainly with the school district, but with the townships there, and with the county. And so, they kind of certainly own that, but just like with Jefferson or Gardner, as soon as there was a development that occurred, it would turn into a city street. So to answer your question specifically, John, yes, naming rights would be available. So, wanted to give you an update, we know it gets used.
And a topic related to that road, I mean, it's not, it's not directly a component of it, but we had a great meeting, Wicker Soulville with city staff related to what, Township Road, the future of putting a pipe in the, a pipe along that ditch, that will help us figure out where we want to go, where is it supposed to go, where do we now want to go? We had a great little map session of looking where, where the dam broke, and how, how we can kind of work together as that water comes out the bluff line, so. Hopefully, continue to look at some solutions as that project moves forward.
I just got a taste of our own medicine, we use a lot of abbreviations with education, and nobody knows what they stand for.
Local road improvement.
Thank you, that's all I wanted.
Yeah, granted, fine, sorry about that.
All right.
We got some, we got some for Gardner. Lot of activity, I mean, I have coven cars out there, maybe some of you have coven cars, but I do think that they'll, the likelihood of additional activity up there, at least from my perspective, is higher with that parking lot. If you go back to your map, there's a parking lot on the north end by some softball fields. And so, it's not just gonna be seasonal traffic, there'll be traffic all year round.
I don't understand, who makes that decision not to allow it, or is, are those, is that road owned by private people, or is that-
Well, so no, traffic is allowed on it now.
Okay.
But you probably drove on Gardner Road on occasion, my kids would call it bumpy road.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and so, right now, in an effort to try and continue to work with the townships, the city has agreements with both the townships that don't wanna share that. It's like sixty-fourty. Oshawa owns about forty percent of it, the south part, and Traverse owns the north, sixty percent of it. So here's kind of the dividing line, give or take a little bit. And so, we've done, no, it's more up here, sorry, more up here. And so, we've undertaken the maintenance of that, keeping it a gravel road, but the level of traffic that's gonna have is not a long-term solution that makes any sense, whether it's from a usability standpoint, or a financial standpoint. And so, having it improved for a hard surface, and really support the activities that are going on, that frankly, where you guys have spent more than a couple million, and we've spent more than a couple million on facilities out there, we wanna make sure that they're accessible and it feels good as you're going out there. And so, that's part of the effort.
So basically, Traverse Township and Oshawa, they have to give the okay.
And they've already done that.
Done that.
They've already done that, it's just a matter of finding the funding to make it go. The agreement also outlines that as soon as an improvement is completed, that it would be, ownership of that would be transferred over to the city.
Okay.
Yeah. So we've been planning this, and had an agreement with them for a few years, yeah.
What's the cost of it?
Cost of it?
Million.
It's a couple, million bucks, maybe a million and a half.
The grant we applied for was a million dollars, and they only had a million dollars in funding, so we thought we might get part of it, which would get us a certain area. Things that we could do to enhance grants in the future would be ownership of the right-ofway. If we have complete ownership of the right-ofway, as we found out with the Gardner Road, Jefferson Avenue improvements, took about eighteen months just to get that secured, so it's a longer process than we had imagined.
So to explain that a little bit more, it's not that the townships don't own the roadway, they own the roadway, but as we build the road, maybe we need three or five feet kind of in the ditch, and just to have those little sections taken care of.
The joint ownership between the school and the city, going around the 361 intersection, we already plotted it that way, the school plotted their portion, we plotted our portion, so everything's perfect on our side, it's just the others that we gotta worry about. So, and that's where we'll have the entertainment.
Yeah, part of the process, just gotta keep plugging along.
Thanks for that update. Any future partnership ideas?
So, so I think one of the ones, let me just throw one out, just to get the ball rolling, and trying to be conservative, as you know the council, and you guys have a meeting at seven, I think, or-
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty. Oh, great. Okay, we have a council meeting at seven, in this room too, so we need a little bit of turnover time. But one of the things that's been talked about, has been challenges related with additional buildings, making sure the school liaison officer can get around and make all those things happen. We probably need a little bit more horsepower there in the future, maybe that's not today, but in the not-too-distant future. We have an agreement in place already, one school liaison officer, and I don't know that there needs to be two, I don't know that we've talked about the fine details of that, but that's probably something we gotta start talking about in the future.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good topic for, we have some committees that, you know, can talk about those things, and maybe, that might be a good next step for that one, like the joint school-city committee.
We have a subcommittee that's established, so maybe that's a great one for the subcommittee to get together and talk about it in the future.
You know, there's so many other partnership components, even the park, I mean, we kinda got right to the brass accident, what maintenance grid and the enhancements, but, you know, I'm thinking Jane and Steve and Mark are talking about all the scheduling, coordination of shared space, and how, how do you make sure that not only you don't have a youth association game the same night you have a soccer game, but also you're coordinating your maintenance? So, somebody's not thinking they're gonna mull Field Four, and somebody already reserved Field Four for a six o'clock game, you know, and just, none of that can work, or it's become so much more problematic if there's just not that open and constant communication between these two entities. That really seems to have stepped up in the last five months. It just, you know, feels really good that, that communication, doesn't mean that we're great, I mean, everything's really like now, that's not my point. But we're just, but we keep that, because the reality is that, here we are, we have a beautiful new high school, and that back hundred acres, we're sharing that, we are together on that thing. And I think the future looks really positive, if we keep working together.
Galiford was just us to be easy, but Gal, try and figure it out with the softball association, and all those people, and everything that's going on, it's, there's some effort that's involved in this. And it's cool that it works, it's working.
And again, you're focusing on athletic facilities, we will be scheduling your fine arts facilities also, and your performing space. I assume, we're considering they wanna use that.
Absolutely.
Had a great community event, Wicker Soulville.
Where are you, Mr. Mayor?
I'll ask the same. Does anybody else have anything that you wanna add? Wanna thank everyone for being here. Thanks for the effort. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, please signify the same. Aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Where are we going?